Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham.
Present.
Commissioner Gault.
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Kahler.
Present. Do we have anyone here tonight for the invocation? invocation, we don't have anyone tonight.
Are you gonna do it?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, I'll do it.
Stand, please.
So, let's all bow our heads, please. Father God, as we come to you today, we just ask that you bless each and every one of us in a special way, and we thank you for the opportunity to meet tonight, and we thank you for each and every soul that's represented here. We thank you for the warmth that's been granted in each home, and for all the churches that have opened their doors and community centers during this week that we've had of tough weather.
Amen.
Okay.
I was saying amen to the warming centers.
Oh, okay. Well, alright.
Okay. Yes. Will Hancock, if you'll come up, please.
Hello. Mayor.
Well, Will is Paducah Tillman High School senior, and he's going to help us with our pledge, and I think you will.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Will. City manager, are there any additions or deletions?
No, Madam Mayor.
So, tonight, we have the recognition for the happiest time of the year, the Christmas Parade Award, and Mark and Mallory.
This is great to have the chambers filled like this, so welcome, everyone.
Steve Urban thought this was for zoning, that everybody was really excited about that, but I don't think that's the case. Mayor Commissioners, we had a great Christmas Parade one week late this year, it was on the 14th of December. We'd like to thank everybody who participated, it's really, they had to change their itineraries and schedules, and we still ended up with 80 groups participating in this year's parade. We had 108, but we understand those who couldn't quite make it, or make it back. Busy schedules around the holidays are always, always happening, but as you can tell, we had a great turnout and a great parade, and Mayor, if you will come down, I'll announce, and you can help hand out the trophies, and over here, and Mallory will help you. For those who don't know, this is Mallory Gentry, our newest staff member with the City of Paducah Park Services, so, and she will help and hand out the right floats and the awards. We do want to say that the second and third place, or any of the other cash awards, we're only giving out cash awards to first place tonight, because the others have already been put in the mail, so. For tonight, the non-float, third place, The Rhythm Factory. Second place, Jason's Collision. And first place, non-float award is Jerry Worth. Our next group is the Religious Float, third place, Ninth Street Tabernacle Youth. Oh, absolutely, bring them all. If you need to get some pictures, or something like that, make sure that everybody's looking on TV, smile for the cameras. Why don't you all turn around, so you can get some pictures here, take it. Second place, Harmony Baptist Church. And first place, Reedland United Methodist Church. And the Drill Team, second place, Silver Linings Homeschool Color Guard. Turn around, so you can get a picture there. Commissioner Gault, I don't know about this next group in red, they are from...
I don't know if they'll let me, they tell me I wore the wrong color.
Well, we have to have some contrast, and...
Don't touch me.
The Drill Team, first place, Mayfield Elementary Cheerleaders. You got a whole bunch there. Good job, ladies. You're welcome. Okay, the next, we're going with the school float. No, let's do the last one there. We'll do theme float, last line, there we go. Last line, theme float, excuse me. Fifth place, Girl Scout Troop 395. Good job. Fourth place, Highland Cumberland Presbyterian Church. Turn around, get some pictures, I think, there we go. Third place, Goodwin Farms. Second place, Pizza Inn. And first place, Cub Scouts, Pac-20.
Oh, you know it. You already know. You already know.
Well, you got two. You got two.
You got two.
First place. Well done, well done. All right. Now, the school float. There's two in this category. MSU Paducah, second place. Lost some lights there. And first place, I think you may want to have Commissioner Abraham up for a couple of these. The school float, Paducah Public Schools. I guess Mr. Sprags is not here tonight, so you're gonna... That was the Polar Express, in case you all didn't see it, it was a great float, it really was a beautiful float, they put a lot of work into it. Okay, band competition, now, we did have three bands, we have one that chose not to be judged, and we really appreciate them participating, this was the first band exhibition for the combined Livingston County Line County Band, and so they participated this year, and was a great first year for them. But second place in the band competition was McCracken County Mustang Band. And first place, band, and I do want to also thank the bands, because they had a competition for their individual competitions, and folks had to run in and out and get there, and we really talked them into it, but we really appreciate them coming and participating with all three bands, but first place, the Paducah Tillman Band of Blue. I think they did. I think they're gonna be recognized next week also, but... As the one that they won down in Jacksonville, but here it is, turn around, folks. Turn around for your picture. And of course, their director, Patrick Sadler, did a great job, thanks, Pat. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, it's like, that's the offer, we can leave, and they were like, yeah, everybody does it.
It's okay.
They what? Oh, yeah, 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 we will. I'll just put it in there.
Thank you.
No problem.
It's okay.
You're welcome, you're welcome. You don't need to.
Hey, how are you? Shouldn't wait for the almanac. I was just, I just missed that, yeah.
I should've gone, Lord bless her.
Go on with our meeting. Commissioner Abraham, for the minutes, please.
I move that the reading of the minutes for December 17, 2013, city commission meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go on to appointments, and I just wanted to tell everyone, the appointments to the Airport Board do not have to be confirmed by the City Commission, but I have appointed Jay Matheny to the Barclay Regional Airport Authority. Jay is an attorney at Ditten &amp; Coiler, he'll make a good board member for the Airport Board, as well as Randall Fox. Randall is CPA, so he will add a lot of value to that board as well, so we're happy to have both of them on board with the Paducah Airport Authority. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Jim Wheeler and William T. Clayton as members of the Commissioner of Waterworks. These terms will expire January 6, 2018.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kahler in reappointing Jim Wheeler and William T. Clayton as members of Commissioners of Waterworks.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Municipal orders, Commissioner Rhodes, please.
All right, upon the recommendation of the City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order the personal changes on the attached list be approved.
Need a sec.
Second. I'm sorry.
Any discussion? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Approving an Application and All Documents Necessary for the City of Paducah Planning Department in Partnership with the Columbia Theater Task Force and the Paducah Film Society to Apply for the 2014 Our Town Matching Grant funded by the National Endowment for the Arts for $81,500 for the Columbia Theater Project be adopted."
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. The National Endowment for the Arts, NEA, Our Town Program encourages local partnerships and seeks projects with the potential to integrate design and the arts into the fabric of the community. Projects should have a positive innovative impact on the community, together with their arts and design organizations and artists, to improve their quality of life and encourage activity. The NEA Our Town Program requires a partnership between units of local government and a non-for-profit organization. The Columbia Theater Project involves the restoration of the facility, which will preserve and revitalize historic structure in downtown Paducah. The Columbia Theater Task Force and the Paducah Film Society are requesting grant funds through the NEA Our Town Program to assist in the development of the financial feasibility study, which will identify marketing strategies, financial resources, and outline the operational viability, sustainability of the theater. Furthermore, the Columbia Theater Task Force and the Paducah Film Society are requesting assistance in preliminary architectural design plans. The preliminary plans will include design schemes, floor plans, elevation, and 3D images, while ensuring the integrity of the historical restoration. The NEA Our Town Grant requires a one-to-one match, which can be in the form of both cash and/or in-kind services. The Paducah Film Society and the Columbia Theater Task Force are proposing to utilize in-kind services to match the NEA grant should the project become funded. Such services would include but not be limited to volunteer work during the cleanup process, administration services, architectural services, donations of rental space, et cetera. The total estimated project cost is $167,000, requests for approximately $83,000 will be submitted to the NEA Our Program. The NEA grant request is really part of a two-part process. Staff anticipates a state Brownsville grant application will be submitted to the Commission for approval in February. The grant will be used for the mitigation of contaminants identified in the environmental documents. For a Brownsville application to move forward, it will require ownership of property by the 501(c)(3) Columbia Club. It also requires a Phase 1 and Phase 2 environmental assessment to be completed. These services have been procured, and Phase 1 has been initiated. This grant does not require a match, I bring this to your attention for the reason if we wish to move forward, planning will need to start the initial process of property transfer as we need to make the February deadline. There's really no action at this time needed on that one.
Any questions for Steve?
Cheryl and Landy are also here for any questions, as they are the authors of the grant.
I know this is a really competitive process that you would go through for this grant, and I know we've applied multiple years for different projects, I guess I'm wondering, how long has it been since, or have we ever received one?
To my knowledge, no, but...
This be the third year that we've been...
This is the third year we've had an application, but we have not received one yet. Okay, so I know last year, we applied for another project, yes, for another project, and they did not receive it, so...
The year previously, I had written one with PRA for the Columbia Club project, and it was initial, it was before we had taken as many steps as we have now, so we're much more prepared, and we had gotten some guidance from NEA about what was missing from that grant, which is kind of why we thought it'd be fruitful to pursue it now, since I had already gone through that process.
It's a better health project, it's the time around that it was two years ago.
Okay.
But it is very competitive. It's a national grant, so those are always...
But what you have on the in-kind services, to do all of the work there through volunteer work, I guess would...
Well, the in-kind matches would come in different ways, architecture, we've got some in-kind work through Ray Blackenstein, and a lot of the administrative costs that the Columbia Club are all volunteer hours, and that is up to, gosh, $40,000 to $50,000 in one year.
And all that counts fine, it's not a problem, so then...
The pledge retains the flexibility, if in fact enough in-kind hours cannot be found, and cash were to materialize, that could still be injected after the award, is that correct?
We can always amend our matching requirements, as long as we meet the fifty-fifty or dollar for dollar match in the end, we can always amend that later if additional funds become available at some point.
Okay, that'd be good.
I think it's important also for the Commission to understand the linkages here, that in fact, the asbestos removal and lead needs to precede a lot of the active work inside of that facility, so hence the importance to go ahead and try to find funding for that work. Comparatively, the timelines for notification back would be what, we're going in pretty much the same time, which will notify us first of whether the grant is successful?
Go ahead. Between NEA and the Brownsville program?
Correct.
Two most likely hear from the Brownsville program first, because it is a state program, less competitive, and they can turn those around and make decisions a lot quicker than the national program.
And that's really the one that unlocks the door to the place, so to speak, for others to get in, so, right, it's critical, quite frankly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your fingers crossed. Please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Approving the Sale of Real Property Located at 1235 South Fifth Street, For and In Consideration of $175,000 Do Julianne Rose Be Adopted?"
Second. City Clerk? Oh, Dave, you're gonna talk about this, she wants to do garden with the surplus property.
Yes, I think she has two properties currently on South Sixth Street, I believe, if she wants to acquire these properties also, they're at the very end of South Fifth Street, up against Island Creek, and she wants to put in some fruit trees and some other things to share with different residents within the neighborhood.
Sounds good.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
We'll go on to ordinances, adoptions, Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Cooperation Agreement Between the United States of America Department of the Army Corps of Engineers for Rehabilitation of Federal Flood Control Work." This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to execute a cooperation agreement between the United States of America Department of the Army Corps of Engineers for Rehabilitation Assistance for Damages Sustained to the City of Paducah Levy Systems During the 2011 Flood pursuant to Public Law 84-99, as documented in the United States Army Corps of Engineers Project Information Reports approved by the Division Engineer on November 21, 2013.
Second.
We talked about this last week, or whenever we met last, it was longer than last week.
Rick is here, if you need...
Does anyone have any questions for Rick?
Just to refresh, it's been a while.
Okay, Mayor, Commissioner, this particular cooperation agreement with the United States Army Corps of Engineers is associated with, again, damages that we sustained down behind Tick Brothers on the riverfront, down adjacent to the Riverport. We had a riverbank slide, and we repaired that about four years ago, and with city money and the Riverport money. Now, the Corps is going to repair that, and they've estimated the cost of that repair to be $1.6 million, of which the City of Paducah only needs to provide about $15,000 worth of soil for them to do this work. So, that was a pretty good return on our money. The basis of this is that since the City of Paducah does a good job in maintaining the flood wall in its current condition, that we qualify for any damages due to floods, for the federal government to pay for 100% of those repairs to the levee and/or the flood wall due to floods, and that's what this agreement is about. There'll be another agreement coming up, reference to the reconstruction of the levee and flood wall that we've been working on for 14 years, or 15 years, in the spring, but this is specific to damage that was sustained by the flood wall during the 2011 flood.
And it's not a one-time only, if we have a flood again, we can apply again, and heaven forbid...
Correct.
...it happen.
Okay.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Rick. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gault?
Yes.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go to ordinances for introduction, we do not vote on these tonight. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
All right. New Year. I move the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Approving the Sale and Transfer of Municipally-Owned Real Property Held for the Use and Benefit of the Commissioners of the Waterworks of the City of Paducah, DBA Paducah Water." This ordinance is summarized as follows, in this ordinance, the City of Paducah, city, approves the sale of surplus real property located at 401 Washington Street, Paducah, Kentucky pursuant to real estate purchase agreement dated August 13, 2013, by and between Paducah Water and Great Rivers LLC, an Illinois Limited Liability Company, for and in consideration of $250,000, and in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in the fore-said agreement. This ordinance further authorizes the mayor of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, for the use...